I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a little better than this.
Yes.
It's better than this.
It's a little more coordinated.
Yes, it sounds good, yes.
We've been looking for that, right Bob?
Yeah.
She didn't muted everybody.
Yeah.
All right.
I was just moving my left.
So first thing, agenda adjustments, they do have one adjustment I would like to make. I would like to ask, so with agenda adjustments for new folks, by policy it does require a vote. We'd like to add an executive session, like to add, let's see, 10.1, which would be a motion to enter an executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056D with the business manager and the director of CAI for Regional Schools United, for Education Association, MEA, NAA, Educational Support Professionals Negotiations. So move.
Second.
So we've got Bob and Joe. All right, actually, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, so we will add that as 10.1. All right, so the first order of business tonight is the election of the chair of the RSG Forceful Board. So at this time, I will open up the floor for nominations for board chair.
I nominate Bob English if he's willing to accept.
I will accept.
I nominate Robert Gate.
I won't accept.
You won't accept. All right. Just making my notes here. All right, do I see any more nominations? At this time, I call for a motion to, for nominations to cease.
So moved.
Okay, second for that.
Second.
Thank you. At this time, Bob, will you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So to vote on the chair of the board and vice chair does require a roll call vote, so I will do the roll call now. Joe?
Yes.
Christie?
Aye.
Jen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
All right, at this point in time, Mr. English will take over as board chair.
Hey, it's easy for you to. I have to be on your side.
First of all, thank you for your confidence. I look forward to your support again this year, as it will be needed from time to time. At this time, we'll do the election of the vice chair and open the nominations for vice chairman.
I nominate Robert Gate.
Nomination for Robert Gate, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? See, and then, do we really need a motion to cease nominations? Would, I just think we just nomination cease since there's no others. Robbie, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
At this time, then, we'll call for the roll.
Right, let's see, Joe?
Yes.
Christie?
Yep.
Jen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Well, I just.
And we're going to get into committee here in a second. Extremely pleased Robbie, if you volunteer for the facilities again.
I will.
With the project that's ongoing.
I will.
In your knowledge.
Yep.
Be very beneficial. So I don't know if something was sent out, or maybe because we had this meeting a little bit early, but normally we ask members to go and think about which committees they would like to serve on. I think Christie, when we met, we talked about that at that time. The rest of us have been on a committee or committees. And if you're willing to continue on those, that makes that easy. Scott, have you thought anything about which committee or committees you would be willing to serve on?
I think I could lend some insight to the technology committee.
Okay, so that's technology and that's also curriculum assessment and instruction. So they meet together.
Yep.
All right, super. How's that going to make our committees look? Are we, have one that only has one member, or? I notice we have a couple of people missing, don't we?
We do. Typically, we have, always, we always have somebody typically serves on two committees.
Yes, currently, I'm on the CAI and Policy and Personnel, and Joan is no longer. Joan is no longer. And Stephanie used to be on Policy and Personnel as well, so that's why everybody. Jen, come to a job interview.
So Vicki will, Vicki will sit in there.
Perfect.
And Robbie sat on two as well.
Yeah, I'm on Facilities and Finance and Curriculum.
Yep.
So.
Do you still want me on Facilities, or do you have enough?
It's, if you want to be on Facilities, we can always use.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
The knowledge and the insight that any board member brings to these committees, I would short. Only reason I wouldn't want, let's say, six or seven people on one committee, then we'd have board meetings.
Right.
And then we have a trouble issue there.
How many is on Facilities right now?
Joe was on Facilities, Vicki.
Joe, Vicki and me.
Okay, good.
All right, so that's Finance, Facilities. Personnel is Vicki and Jennifer.
And me.
And Christie.
And Christie, all right, super.
Good.
And CAI Technology, Scott?
I'm on that as well.
You're on that, and Robbie?
Yeah.
And Andrea and Dory as well.
Andrea and Dory were both on that.
I should come off. I'll, I'll come off.
Guys, I just joined the call.
Where that would make five.
Yeah, that would be too many.
That would be too many, so I'll, I'll come off that one.
All right, so we got that captured?
I'm sure I'll have extra meetings in Facilities when we get cracked up.
I'm sure you will.
We've got a lot coming.
All right, well, thank you all for.
Excuse me, Andrew.
Going to serve in these important positions. At this time, we'll move on to 3.1. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2021, and June 30th, 2021 Board of Directors Meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, corrections? No comments? Okay, see, and then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
I didn't, I wasn't here for most of that stuff.
Correct.
I read the minutes, but I'm not sure if it tells enough when you make about decisions.
All right, that's fine, that's why I offered that option. Okay, petitions and communications, 4.1, to elect a local delegate to the MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly.
So I didn't, I didn't put this on as an action item for this board meeting.
Okay, all right, sorry, so it's just local.
Yeah. Okay. I just thought it might be worth a conversation, especially for our mid-board members, about what this is. And then at the next board meeting, we put it on as an action. Do you want to talk about it, Bob?
I can. So yearly, the Main School Board Association and this Main School Superintendent's Association have what used to be a four-day conference, the first being superintendent, and the next three being school board. With superintendent, superintendent's always there to making sure school board members didn't get out of hand. But it's, it's a opportunity, I believe this year it's going to be remote again, it's going to all be online. But it's an opportunity which, in some ways, is really beneficial for someone who's just interested in attending a few of the seminars.
Yep.
You know, you can log in for your seminar, you don't have to be there all day. Used to be at the Civic Center, they'd put on a nice lunch, have a keynote speaker, which they are having a keynote speaker this year as well. I don't know if everybody got the email from Main School Management about the delegate conference.
Our new members will get it soon, once they're registered to MSBA.
Right, so. But it lays out the agenda, they'll get more information about all the different seminars, you can register for door prices even though there's no door. Used to go around and fill your little goodie bag.
Yes.
With pens and paper and things that the different vendors were offering. And there was a real, I found that the ones I've gone to, and I think I've been to three or four, were helpful to me, especially visiting some of the vendors and what some of the products that they had to go and offer and services that they made available to the schools. The seminars were extremely beneficial if I could get into the ones I wanted to, which typically could. The only conflict ever had was wanting to go to one when I had to go to the delegate election or assembly. To vote on bylaws and changes. They always seem to have the best one set, but I would encourage anybody that would be interested, think about it, look it over, and if you have the ability, I think this is probably going to be a Friday and Saturday deal this year. All right, because it's online. Contact the superintendent's office, let them know that you'd like to be a delegate. We need to have one voting delegate. Well, yeah, you'd like one voting delegate who's supposed to go and vote at their meeting, which obviously would be online. And they vote on things that the School Board Association wants to promote to the legislature or to the community. So I just recently received a copy of what those items are. We, I don't know, I think everybody gets.
Yeah.
And I, and I will be sending them out this week as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that I agree with all of them, but that's just me. I would hope that whoever our delegate is, is that meeting before, so that those things come up and we discuss them. And just something, what the position of the school board is as a whole, you're going to represent the school board and not your individual self. All right, pass the vote on behalf of the board. So give us some thought, check out the information, see what's there. It probably doesn't cost hardly all that much this year, since I don't have to pay for the Civic Center rental and stuff like that, so, okay. That's it, I don't know, anybody else that's been, have anything to ask?
The only thing I'd like to say is that they have a lot of interesting seminars, like on school law, which is put on by Drummond Woods and us, our lawyers, negotiations, hot topics that might come up, you know, in past school years and stuff like that, so it's really beneficial.
It is, especially if you're new to this arena.
Yeah.
It's really informative and you get to really network with people and ask questions.
Yeah, it was a lot nicer when you could go sit and have lunch at the round.
Yep.
You know, and talk to other board members and, yeah.
They came down from all over the state.
Yeah.
Loads of them coming down.
And I've been on both sides.
Yeah.
And as a, as a superintendent and as a school board member, I was, actually, I think Bob and I were both delegates one year when I was on the school board in 49. And Bob's correct, it really gives you, and Robbie too, Jen, it gives you an eye-opening experience as to, there's a lot of education involved. The delegate assembly is a little interesting. You know, it's about an hour out of the day where you take some votes and there's a lot of talking. It's a worthwhile experience if you never die.
Okay. And we'll move on, superintendent's report.
Yep, so, short report tonight, but, so we're in the phase of hiring at this point, so you're going to see on the next agenda a slew of things to approve with regards to hiring. We do have two teaching openings to fill, get quite a few head tech positions open. And Scott, I believe we've got some food service and custodial positions.
That's correct.
We're working on those currently. Yeah, all in all, you know, I've met with candidates, we've got some fantastic people that we hired over the summer, so I'm excited about what they're going to bring to the district. I would say the moves across the district went well, you know, we made a major move this summer. I gotta, I gotta give Glenn a lot of credit, I mean, he coordinated a lot, our administrators coordinated a lot, and we got things moved in short order. Literally, at the end of June, things were done.
Having that extra two weeks meant a big difference.
It made a huge difference, it really, really did. So I'll be touring buildings next week, typically, next week before school starts, two weeks I start touring buildings to see the condition, but those, I've been in all of them, they look fantastic. They really do, I mean, you walk into this building, it looks really good. So, you know, I'm really happy, our custodial staff does a fantastic job taking care of our buildings. Every year it just gets better and better. More, again, more time always helps, for sure. Just an update on the architect, I did sign a contract with the architect. Scott and I met with the architect two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Boy, time is running together, but we met a couple of weeks ago, they're getting ready to get started. They've asked for some of our blueprints from the middle school, our TEP permits, things like that, so they're working on that piece. They'll be coming in probably at the end of the month to start meeting administrators about programming, and then they will meet with staff. They're going to pick some staff out to meet with, to talk about what they would like to see in our building, in this new building. So all in all, I was really impressed, I don't know if Scott, if you want to add anything. Really impressed with Kathy and Alan and what they're going to bring to the table.
They're squared away.
Yeah, I mean, all, all the references and things that they've said, we've gotten, you know, I'm very comfortable where we are, and we'll see what. And for our two new members, we contracted the CHA architects, so we went through a competitive process, interviewed architects and we picked them. And I, like I said, they do fantastic work, so if you guys want to see any of the work they've done, I'm more than happy to send it to you. They had packets that they submitted when they entered our RFP, so I can get those too if you'd like it. But I'm, I'm excited what they're going to do for us in general. As you all know, the CPT team met on Monday, we'll be hearing an update from that, and Kathy will do that. And the audit was done the first, the first of July, first week of July, right Scott, we finished the audit?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, I don't want to speak for the auditors, but I think things look pretty good, so.
Yeah, when I met with them, they were pretty pleased.
Yep, so.
Are they going to come visit us again?
Oh, they will.
Oh yeah.
They'll come visit. Yeah, by law it is supposed to.
Yeah, they have to, so we usually do that in October, I think.
We're paying for it, Jen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We do pay for it.
He always likes to do this to us. It's the one time when I want to tell everybody, tune in, just tune in.
Well, I, I don't, you know, just don't want to say anything, but when I first started here a few years ago, it was like, okay, we'll do the last.
Yeah.
Now we're the first ones.
Yeah.
That is how it says.
That's, that's why it's volumes, yes.
Yeah, I met with them a couple of times, and they just couldn't say enough about the work that our, our staff in central office do to keep things straight. And our administrators, and their administrative assistants, just all of it, it's really, really come a long ways, even in just my five years as superintendent, so.
Yeah.
Or four years, four years, sorry. Time gets big. Scott.
Angela tells you the old days, when you used to just get a box of receipts.
Oh yes.
Yep.
Other than that, we do, I don't have any appointments tonight, but I do have some resignations. Sarah Redash, grade four teacher at CRS, Karen Bailey, custodian SPS, Patty Gordon, librarian slash teacher at Oak Hill Middle School, recurring food service at Carrick River School, and Jessica McKenzie in head tech two. I think I lose my report.
All right, any questions? We'll move on, we don't have any other reports that are coming on. And somehow, I think 5.7 is actually supposed to be 3.1 or something.
Yeah.
Reverting back to an old copy of the agenda, so. Public comment, I apologize to the public, we should have opened it up to you right after the reading or the approval of the minutes. We will do that at this time. So this is an opportunity when members of the public can have the floor and speak on issues pertaining to the school system. It is not a time for members of the public to come up and identify or a particular staff member or student with a, with an issue that should go through the chain, so we don't allow for comments that are derogatory in nature towards an individual. All right, that's not what the public forum is for. So it is for comments about the education system, if you want to recognize a staff member that did a great job, that's a little bit different. Those we allow, it's kind of like a two-sided coin. Say good things, but not the bad things. And so we have a large, well, we have a number of people joining us on Zoom. All right, and so we would ask, those are on Zoom, this is, we don't turn it on, everybody, you can put in a chat. Superintendent or Kathy, somebody is monitoring that, and we'll read those or recognize the individual who wants to go and speak to go ahead and speak, or you can raise your hand. Not the clap sign, but I think it's under participants down at the bottom, there's a little thing to your hand. You raise your hand that way so that you can be called upon, all right? And at this time, we will open it up. I will say one other thing, it has been the practice of this board, even when other members have been chair, that during issues that are later in the agenda, when we talk about an item that, for which there may be a desire for the public to speak, we allow that to happen, but that is typically after the board is pretty well-finished discussion, discussion. And we'll let the public briefly have a few minutes to go and address what we've spoken about. And then the board members will, once again, just wrap up any things that, that those comments may have brought up for us, and then the board will take whatever action is appropriate on the, on the item. So that, I plan to continue. That way, it's hard to go and speak, we're going to talk later about, the CPT update is kind of hard to make comments ahead of time if you don't know what that update is, you might find that you want to make a comment about what the results of that, or the recommendation that was made is. So I think that's why we've done it, and we plan on continuing doing that. So anybody, anybody in the audience, would identify anybody on Zoom to identify who they are, which town they're from, just like if they were here in the room, we would know who it is that's speaking. Anybody in the room, we ask you to come up and use the mic, even though we might hear you, you have to remember this is being broadcast. And so the microphone allows the people out on the internet, either on our streaming site or on Zoom, to hear what you're saying, okay?
All right, so I do have Samantha on the Zoom that would like, has a question. So Samantha, if you're there, you can unmute yourself, and we've got you on the speakers. Yeah, she asked a question, so I will, I will read it.
Okay.
Are our children in kindergarten going to be required to wear face masks?
Okay, so let me, I guess the other thing I forgot to mention, this is usually, this period is for you to make your comments and discussions, it's not a back and forth. However, for this one, I will go and provide that answer, that is going to be discussed under 7.2, 7.1 and 7.2. And so we'll wait till then and hear what the recommendations were from the CPT team, and if the board needs to take any action to modify what the plan for the fall was that we approved in late spring. All right, so Samantha, that's, that's where we pinned on that. So again, this is comments, this isn't a time for an exchange back and forth, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
I don't have anything else at this point.
So nobody else have any comments?
There's a question, comment from Natasha. Natasha, would you like to speak? I think you can unmute yourself and speak if you'd like. Oh, okay, I can, I can just read her comment then, she said, she would ask if we could discuss at some point about doing early release instead of late start.
Okay, so we can kick that off for a committee to think about that, because that takes a lot of discussion, not only with us, but with the association. So it's certainly something, everything is open for discussion. So we'll take that under notes are being made, so that that can be looked into. And at some point, if, if it's decided that that is a viable option, it would certainly come to the board for consideration.
Oh, do you think that should be sent over to CAI?
Well, that's who I would think would be the appropriate committee, so to look into it. Just to see what they think about it, and certainly that there's a lot of other things that would have to be involved in that too. Okay, there's no other comments? All right, so we'll move on to 7.1, this is a CPT update.
Right, so as you all know, the collaborative planning team met on Monday. If you aren't all aware, those videos get posted on our website, so they are there to be watched. I think it was up probably 15, 20 minutes after the meeting, pretty quick turnaround. We've gotten pretty good at recording Zoom and getting it up pretty quickly. So did meet on, on Monday, there's, you know, as always, as with the situation we are all living in, there's, there's ebbs and flows to what goes on, the executive order has been lifted, things are now recommendations, so good, pretty lengthy, I would say, two hours on Monday. We talked about some changes potentially to the plan, so I will turn it over to Kathy to talk about what the CPT looked at on Monday.
Yeah, so after the board makes the recommendations or approvals, we'll make this PowerPoint presentation to a one-sheer, to then communicate it out to parents, so. For this purpose, I just want to make sure you understand and go through the whole process. So as Andy alluded to, that we are no longer under executive orders on July 1st, which means that we can, we have to follow the CDC guidelines, but the DOE has no longer the ability to mandate things. So until another executive order happens, right now they're currently in recommendations. A couple of differences going forward this year compared to last year is they will no longer color code the counties. So the US CDC has a map of the entire United States and are color coding. And their color code system was different than Maine, so it's like a five-point or six-point color code system. It actually changes daily. So for example, today, Andrus Goggin, we had 27 extra cases since, since the weekend, and we actually went up in color, so it's a severity, where Kennebec County is in the moderate, it's one of the three counties, even though Kennebec County actually has more cases than Andrus Goggin at the time of the differences. So I'm not quite sure of the formula, we did ask those questions, and they are working on figuring out those nuances of how the color coding happens. However, the color codes on the US CDC does not affect the main DOE's recommendations and plans at this time, so that's a little bit different going forward. So when the CDC, we have met with, I've met with Dr. Shaw at the end of July, I've met with the commissioner last week and even today. They are currently looking to update the standard operating procedures, and usually, that is the document that the CPT kind of makes those determinations of changes to the plan. The SOP has not been changed or updated since May 13th or 15th, but I can look. So we're looking to have those, those recommendations. So the plan that we have here is based on the recommendations and the changes that we've had over the summer. But know that this is a fluid plan, and our process, for those of you that are new to this, is we usually, the board approves a plan. If there's new recommendations or mandates, the CPT team meets again, they go over what is that impact for, you know, mandate or recommendation happened for RSG 4, and then we bring it back to the board, so that's kind of our process. And that's how this, this presentation happened. So during the week of July 26th, the Maine CDC sent information to schools regarding what they considered the expectations for the fall. They had four that they're pushing, so last year. They had four that they're pushing. So last year, at this time, we talked about six mitigation strategies and mandates, alright? Recommendations was not used, it was more requirements. That's different this year without the executive order. So they're trying to push four different mitigation strategies that they want schools to really consider. So that's, these are kind of the topics that we'll discuss in our plan. The first one is the new recommendation on universal masking. If you look at it, they're obviously in the last couple of weeks, the Delta variant has affected students, especially younger students. So they're recommending universal masking at this point. And they are recommending it in areas that on that map, as I talked to on the US CDC, if you're in a certain color, that's where you hit universal masking. Not necessarily universal masking for everybody. All people on public and private, and for us, we are considered that. School public, provided transportation are required to wear masks. And part of that is the distance, and it's still considered like an indoor area. That is a mask mandate from the US CDC order, not through the DOE. So when we made the change of unmasking during summer school, we still continue to have masks on our school buses. They're pushing the vaccines, so that is a way to reduce the spread of COVID. And they're encouraging anyone that's eligible 12 and up to get vaccinated. There is potential for 6 through 11 to be approved of a vaccine. When that happens, RSG-4 will have a pop-up clinic, one in Litchfield and one in Sadatus. And we'll make sure we bus kids over or do what we need to do to make vaccines available to our students and community members. The last one is pool testing. This is one of the things that we talked about in the spring. The board at the time decided to not support pool testing, but we'll talk about that a little bit more in tonight's presentation. So let's talk a little bit about masking. So it is recommending universal masking in schools. Tonight, we are suggesting a color-code system for RSG-4, a color-code system that would color each school. So we would not make a determination at the, a sweeping decision about masks at the district level. It would be based on schools. And so we're really talking about where, we're taking the recommendation of when their cases are higher, that's when you need to implement your mitigation strategies. And so if the cases are going up, we would have students wear masks. When the cases are low in those particular schools, then it would become a parent choice. And we'll talk a little bit about the color-coding system in a minute. Regardless of our color code, though, it is still required if students are taking RSG-4 busing, they have to have a mask on. That is not a choice. Again, vaccinations. We are going to be having to do a report monthly and report to the DHHS about how many of our staff members are vaccinated. We are going to, when school starts, we will be asking our staff to include a poll to get that data, and we will be posting it on our website as well. So the data that we provide for DHHS will make it available for our community members.
And that will be done anonymously?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that anonymously. Basically, the way that metric works is we will put out a survey, survey the staff, they will answer the question yes or no, or if they choose not to, they're still included in the total number. So if we had 100 staff members and 30 responded yes, and nobody else responded, our number would be 30%. So.
And we are not requiring our staff to be vaccinated. We're literally just asking them if they are for this report. We will, throughout the year, offer services like pop-up clinics. We'll share resources on our websites, and we'll post our vaccination rates on our website as well, to keep our community members aware. Pool testing. Pool testing, for those of you that don't know much about pool testing, it's pretty much a team of three people that come into each classroom and have all the students that had permission, parent permission, to participate in pool testing, have a COVID test, it was a PCR test on one day. They swab the nose, and all of the kids in that pool would go into one vial. We would then nail it off, and if there was a negative test, then we're good to go. If there's a positive test in that vial, then the kids, students would still come to school. No one has to quarantine. We would then have the kids come to school and do a rapid test on all students in that pool. Depending on the color of your county, it depends on how big your pool test is. So maximum 25, but if we are in a high area of transmission in the community, they do a pool test of just five students. So we can then narrow down where the positive case is. The student or the staff member that is positive would go home and quarantine, just like they would do for the regular CDC. All the other students and staff would continue to go to school. In order to have the no-quarantine component of pool testing, we have to have at least 30% participation. So at, back in the spring during our actual fall plan that was approved, pool testing was voted on to not participate. But because it was another recommendation again, I wanted to make sure that we brought it back to the board. So our mitigation plans. The collaborative team, which includes students, teachers, admin, parents, board members, meet regularly to review updates and continue to do that.
Sorry, I just gave her.
The changes necessary based on recommendations or mandates that come from the CDC or the US CDC. And all these recommendations will come back to the board. We're suggesting that each school, so not the district, each school will have a color-code system. Each school will be identified as green, yellow, or red to let the stakeholders know which part of the mitigation plan that the school is working on. This color system will help administrators, students, and parents, and teachers know what the expectations are, including mask-wearing. In addition, we also have a color-code system for individuals for symptoms. So if they are symptomatic, we actually have a color-code system as well. We know that we were sending kids home for very minor symptoms last year, and we're trying to mitigate that. We're trying to start a color-code system to keep kids into school a lot longer. And so we're going to talk about what are some of the things that we can do this year that we've learned from last year that will help do that. So let's just talk about the school-level plan. So a school that is in the green category is a school that has zero or one positive COVID case in a 10-day period will follow the green mitigation plan. So every 10 days, this will be updated. So we will have that color-code system updated on the website, and it will also be communicated through our Infine campus Shell Point system. If we have a school that has two or three positive COVID cases in attendance period, they will follow the yellow mitigation plan. If a school has four or more, which is, you know, three, three or more is considered an outbreak in a school. You need to know that we only had one school that was very close to getting to outbreak status last year, just one, at one point in the school year. So to get to red, you know, if we look at last year's coded, I know the variants didn't be very different, but we didn't, we wouldn't have had anyone in red as of last year. So if they have four or more, CDC gets involved, and at that point, we would have to follow the red mitigations. Most of the time, CDC will have us be remote for a 10-day period, because that would be considered outbreak status. There are also times you need to know that there might be some grade levels, not the entire school, that could go into the red designation due to lack of staffing or quarantining. So let's talk a little bit about the details of each of those. So while school is in the green category, masks will not be required. We are still following the guidance from the CDC that they're recommended for unvaccinated individuals, including those under 12 or those who have chosen not to be vaccinated, to wear face coverings only indoors. Masks are not required outdoors. Masks are required for any use of school transportation. Physical distancing. So this is one of those top six that were last year. Through the information last year, through all of the studies on COVID, they realized physical distancing, although it is a, the one mitigation strategy is not the one that actually is effective in terms of in schools. It wasn't changing the fact that kids couldn't be into schools. So we will pay attention to where physical distancing is possible. To the greatest extent, we'll try to encourage that during our learning environments. Just as we did last year, our hand hygiene and disinfectant practices will continue. However, if we move to yellow, yellow would require masks to be worn indoors regardless of vaccination status and on school transportation. So this is right before we're getting to outbreak status. We're asking everyone to wear a mask to make sure we're not in outbreak status and have to go to remote learning. So if we're in the green category, it's a parent choice. Once we're into yellow, we are now in universal masking. Masks would not be required outdoors. Again, physical distancing where possible. Classrooms that have had a student with close contact with a positive case would still be able to attend school will be given a symptom check. So in the past, we've had just parents do that. If students have been identified as a close contact, we would do the symptom check, we would do a temperature check, and we would pod our students at one possible. We are also offering that we can test students at school using the Bynext Now, which is the rapid test, after three to five days after the last day of exposure. That would be parental choice. We would be calling each parent before administering a rapid test. Hand hygiene and disinfectant practices will continue as well. If we are in outbreak status, the CDC would put us into remote learning. We would have students bring home their devices, and they would access their learning platforms such as Google Classroom or Seesaw, depending on the child's grade level. Their designation would only happen if we're seeing an increase of COVID cases or lack of staffing due to quarantines. I think it's important that you understand that we're not using the word hybrid here. I think the CPT had a nice conversation about that. We're not, we're not suggesting hybrid. We are only suggesting we are looking to do five days in-person, face-to-face instruction. At only point when we get to the red status, that students would be in a remote setting. And that would be for the 10-day period only. So I just mentioned that we would be offering rapid testing. That is something we didn't offer last year. We done the application, which got accepted yesterday.
So part of that is tests like the COVID-19 test, strep test, things like that, are technically supposed to be done in a place that has a laboratory, but CLIA, which is part of DHHS, is allowed by public schools to apply for a waiver. Did apply for the waiver. We were granted a district waiver to be able to give the Bynext Now test in our school health offices across the district. You know, we, I look at it as, again, that you guys would take a final vote on that, but I look at it as an opportunity to provide a service for our communities.
So rapid testing would be for those students who or staff that would be deemed as close contact or individuals that are exhibiting symptoms. Parent permission would be required prior to administering the testing. Contact tracing. Last year, our contact tracing all the way till about May was everyone in the classroom. Around May 13th, that's when it was determined that we could do a six-foot bubble around a person that was positive. The CPT team at that time felt like we were just going to continue to do the classes. At that point, vaccination rates were going up, and we really didn't want to change the practice for the rest of the year. We did decide to revisit it as a CPT team for the fall, and we did, and are suggesting that we use the six-foot bubble. That means when we have a positive case, instead of having the whole classroom, we might only have two students versus up to, so sometimes when we had a positive case, we could put two kids in, we could also put up to 90 kids in. And so by doing a six-foot bubble, obviously, it depends on what grade level and how much exposure they have to other students and staff. But again, it's a six-foot bubble for more than 15 minutes. So we would, we kind of played the tracking game, May through June, myself and the nurses. We kind of actually tried to, even though we say, how hard would this be to do the six-foot bubble? And we were able to do that, and it did reduce the amount of kids that were going to go into quarantine. So again, we would be suggesting to identify students within that six-foot bubble. So the individual plan. So when we're talking about green, this is a student that, or a staff member that is not exhibiting any symptoms. The individual does the screener in the morning, they feel good, and they can come and come to school and follow the school-level designation. So they might be feeling good, but the school might be in a yellow. They would still have to come masked. So just wanted to make sure that if I'm green, that doesn't mean I don't have to be masked. So if I'm green, I'm good to come, come to school and follow the school plan. If I'm yellow, I might have some low-level symptoms. Those symptoms are going to be updated, I think, in the next couple of weeks. So that symptom checker hasn't been updated since October 9th, 2020. So we're expecting to see that updated before school starts. So if they have a low-level symptom, regardless of their vaccination status, or if the individual has symptoms that worsen, so they would technically, in the low-level symptoms, be in the yellow status, and we'll talk about what that looks like. If it starts to worsen or they have multiple symptoms, they would be in the red category. Any individuals in the red category would be asked to stay home, and instructions of how to come back to school look very similar to last year. So students that are designated as green, masks are not required if the green designation at school is, but it's still recommended for all unvaccinated students, individuals, including those 12 and under. They do not need to wear it outdoors, but they do need to wear it on school transportation. All individuals will complete that home screener prior to coming onto school grounds. It is not something they have to fill out, it's just about asking the questions. How do I feel today? Do I have any of these symptoms? There's usually typically, or questions that they have to ask to see if they're feeling well. The low-level symptoms that are identified right now are considered headache, congestion, runny nose, nausea, muscle ache, and pains. If a student or individual or staff member is exhibiting any of these symptoms, masks are required. They can still come to school, but masks are required regardless of vaccination status. Anyone that's exhibiting symptoms should contact the nurse so we can document it, but can still attend school. And that is something very different than last year. So if you were exhibiting these symptoms, you were asked to stay home. And the reason why we want to make sure we're talking with a nurse is because we want to track that, especially if we're going to head to a rapid testing later on. Individuals will notify the nurse if there's any additional symptoms or if it worsens. High-level symptoms include vomiting, diarrhea, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, mucus, loss of taste or smell, sore throat, chills, or fever of 104 or greater. Any of these symptoms, we would ask that you, just like before, contact the nurse for documentation, but they can still access learning through a remote option. Individuals will keep the nurse apprised of their symptoms and contact their PCP regarding next steps. These are very similar to last year in terms of returning to school after an illness. So typically, we have folks that go to see their PCP. They either get a diagnosis or they don't get a diagnosis. So if they get a diagnosis, whether it's like allergies or things, they may return once they have a doctor's note and are fever-free for 24 hours without the aid of medication. That is a practice that we had prior to COVID. And they should talk to the nurse prior to coming back to school. If they were given no diagnosis, then all of these three criteria need to be met. So 10 days have passed and spun aside of the symptoms. 24 hours have passed without a fever, without the medication, and improvement of symptoms. Sometimes when you see your PCP, a COVID-19 test is taken. If a negative test has happened, then doctor's note or test results. If you're fever-free, you can come back to school. If you have a positive test result, then the CDC gets involved and has you do your 10-day quarantine. Suggests that they stay home, hydrate their rest, and isolate. If a student or staff member is deemed a close contact, if they are vaccinated, they must, we are not asking for folks, if they're vaccinated or not, unless they're a close contact, and that was the same practice as last year. If they're deemed a close contact, they just show us a copy of their vaccination card, and they don't have to quarantine at this time. It is recommended, even if you're vaccinated. It is recommended, even if you're vaccinated, to take a COVID test three to five days afterwards from the last day of exposure and to monitor their symptoms for 10 days, but they can still come to school. For individuals that are non-vaccinated, that person is going to have to quarantine for 10 days. Again, it's recommended that they take a test three to five days after the last day of exposure, monitor their symptoms for 10 days. They can still, if they're feeling good, attend school remotely by accessing a learning platforms from home. What that learning looks like will depend on the grade level. It is not part of the plan, but each leadership team at the different schools will come up with a plan and share with parents what that access to remote learning looks like. It does look different depending on the different grade levels. Traveling, Andy and I, we've had out a letter every single time a major holiday or break would happen. We usually follow the current guidelines from the CDC, so we will continue to do that throughout this year and update parents what the guidelines are if they are choosing to travel either domestically or internationally. So this is what kind of the color code system on our website will look like. So this is Oak Hill High School. This is what the color code, if Oak Hill was green, yellow, or red. So our dashboard will look a little different on our website this year. Each school will be listed with a color designation as you see on the right. Each school will have that vaccination percentage that we will be sharing with the CDC and DHHS. And each school will have their positive case with dates listed. So just like last year, I put in the date in the positive case. That way, parents know when the 10 days start. The only difference is we're not numbering how many close contacts there are. Because if I'm doing the six-foot bubble, we're going to get to lower numbers, and we don't want to get to identifiable cases. A breakdown of cases, I did by month last year. I will continue to do the breakdown of cases graph by month so we can compare our COVID cases month by month. So data will be coming as early as September 1st of how much our staff, where our vaccination stats are. And that is it for my presentation. Any questions or discussion?
All right. So I guess the discussion I would have be is what is... So this is the recommendation of the CBT. Are there changes there between what it was in the spring?
So...
Just to highlight what to change. For people who have, know what the one was, what is actually changing from that plan?
Yeah, so I guess a couple of things. One, we're not a hybrid. We're either full in or full out. Our color code system is different, so... And that's kind of like our best way to move from the hybrid situation to get kids in as much as possible. The mask piece of giving parent choice in the green category, where before it was masked all the time. So we're trying to give some, when our cases are really low, to give an opportunity if parents so choose or staff members so choose not to have to wear masks. A big difference too is that we're offering rapid testing. So instead of sending students home symptomatic, we are actually giving them a rapid test and then making sure that they might just have allergies, or they might just have a cold, and they can still continue to go to school. So I would say those are the major changes from our plan last year.
I think also to add to that, the CBT team does not recommend we take on full testing at this time. That was actually meaningless. I will say, even the CBT team didn't vote on this plan. It was not a unanimous vote. It was a 12 to 4 vote. So I think you need to know that. There were varying reasons why people were not in favor of it, but it was a majority vote, 12 to 4.
Right, and that was, I think, only on the universal masking versus parental option. So it is recommended that students mask whether vaccinated or not. It's just not mandatory unless we move into a yellow situation. So it comes down to, hopefully, those that are unvaccinated were asking to wear masks. And I hope that they follow that guidance. It is not one reason why I voted for universal. That's really easy to go and tell kids mask or not, or should be. Doesn't matter, they should be, but when it's just their option and we don't know if they're masked, the teacher doesn't know if the students in their classroom are masked or not or vaccinated or not, so should they have a mask on? You don't know, so... I guess basically it is the Wild West with masking going on in the middle and high school where they're age-able to have vaccinations, the lower rate. There is no vaccination for them, so we know what their status is. All right, so that is, this is the plan for fall that was approved by the CBT to come back for the board approval. And once the board approves it, or I guess we're now in 7.2, having gotten the update. Once the board approves the plan, they modify it or not tonight on what was presented, then that information will be distributed. It's put out and distributed to all the community, to all the parents, and all the stakeholders, staff, and everybody that needs to have it, so it can be referred to and be ready to be implemented in less than a month's time when we're back in school. All right? So if any board members has any comments or questions about the plan, Robbie?
Yeah, I guess Kathy, are we saying that unvaccinated students in the plan should be wearing a mask?
It's recommended but not required in the green category.
Yeah, but our plan says that they don't have to wear masks. They're not required to.
Not required in the green category. Once you get to yellow designation, it's universal.
Right, everybody has to mask with yellow.
Yes, except for on the bus.
Right.
Everyone has, so we'll keep running our bus.
So the plan is not requiring anybody to wear a mask?
Right, to wear a mask. That was my point. We're just recommending that unmasked students, which would right now be anybody under 12.
Unvaccinated.
Well, you can't get a vaccination if you're under 12. So everybody under 12, the plan recommends that they wear a mask.
Yes.
Okay.
It recommends that all students wear a mask, but there's a little distinction between those vaccinated and not.
Right, and that's how we ran summer school. So the last two sessions of summer school, students wore a mask on the bus, and then it was recommended if you were unvaccinated to wear a mask, but it was parent and student choice.
Right.
I will say, in our pre-K5 world, about 95% of our students did dawn a mask on the bus and took off during summer school session. Just so you can see what the choice is.
Right. I think it's important to note too, this still, this, I mean, we voted on a plan to be in-person five days a week.
Right.
And this doesn't change that. This just adds on to it, the specification. Joe?
Yeah, so if student one has a positive case, he's out for 10 days. We're still green. Student two on day seven tests positive, we go to yellow for three days.
So the 10-day is the last day of exposure. So if a student tests positive, it's when they're, it goes by their symptoms, when they started symptoms and the exposure. So there are some that are going to overlap, so yeah, there might be some that are 13 days. However, it's not on the day that you got your test. It's the day you started symptoms. So sometimes people get tested three to five days after they've gotten symptoms, and so we're already like halfway done in the 10 days of last day exposure. So it's case by case of when that 10 days is, but when we put it on the dashboard, we'll have the update of when the 10 days will be up and then relooked at.
And I can see it's a little bit, because I would think it would be updated daily. It would be a rolling 10 days. And once you're into 10 days, you have two or more, you go to yellow, two or three. But the next day, you could be back down to one.
Right, that's...
Right? If you went to two, the next day you could be to one because the first one is now past the 10 days.
Yeah, sometimes working with the CDC, each case is case by case, and sometimes if someone's asymptomatic, that is a different like 10-day marker than if someone was symptomatic. So that's why the 10 days, we'll just keep it updated on the dashboard and try to continue to communicate with parents.
So I guess my concern would be knowing that this is a constant fluctuation as shown by the example they just said. What are the manners in which we are going to communicate this to families and the community so that we're not constantly trying to chase whatever the requirement is?
So I think the nice part about the color code system is that we can just communicate that it will be sent out on the first day plan. It will be on the website. We were sending out, it felt like communication daily on positive cases. So this would probably reduce that because then we'd just say, here's your case for the 10 days. Here's what you do. Really, we're saying the only difference from the green to the yellow is masks all the time. If for whatever reason they've gotten a secondary disorder, that tells us that we're masked all the time, then we would just be in the yellow category all the time until we change that, till the CBT, you know, reiterated on our plan.
Let's don't worry about that, but I guess, you know, the real point is, is how do we let the parents know that in the morning when the students come in, if they're now yellow?
Correct. We give communication at, right now, through campus. We've been doing that. And similar to when we do contact tracing, we contact them and let them know when their 10 days are up, so.
Yep, and it's pretty efficient within the campus. You know, I can push out, I can push it to emails, inboxes, and phone calls. And actually, we now have text messaging capability as well, so I can all roll this through there. It's pretty efficient.
That was my biggest concern, is with things changing so quickly.
Right?
Yeah, Kathy, when it comes to vaccinated and unvaccinated students quarantining for close contact, vaccinated students, let's say at the high school, wouldn't have to quarantine.
So once they show us proof of vaccination, they don't have to quarantine?
So what about if we, they get the, unvaccinated people get the rapid test? And they don't show a positive test?
That's what we're suggesting is that a close contact would wear a mask, monitor symptoms, and three to five days. If a parent allows us to do the rapid test, they can continue to come to school.
But they could continue to come to school with a mask on?
Correct, and we just monitor that. But we're going to reduce that amount because we're in the six-foot, six-foot bubble.
Right.
So I guess I'm, so if an unvaccinated student is close contact, they can come to school wearing a mask until three to five days after contact, then they can get a test, and then we decide whether they're in quarantine or not?
The test does.
The test, well, the test.
Yeah.
So during that period in between, they're going to be in school. So it's not like they have to go out of school for three to five days until they're tested.
That's my question.
Running it just like a test. So it's going to keep kids in school.
Keep kids in school as much as possible.
Right, I just don't want kids in school that are going to be able to pass it on.
So I guess my next question would be vaccinated students that are close contact, will they have to wear a mask and get a rapid test? Because you can still catch COVID.
Recommended, so recommended or required. It is still recommended that they would get a test after three to five days of exposure, based on CDC guidelines.
Right.
If they're showing those symptoms, they would still be in the green category. They wouldn't have to wear a mask if this was in the green designation as well.
Okay.
And we're going to let staff members know which students that are close contacts are unvaccinated so they can be wearing masks? Is that information we pass to our teachers?
Yep, our nurses are really good about letting, when students were identified as close contact, they got the list, they got the date of when they can come back so that all students knew when they could return, and then staff knew when, who was going to be accessing remote learning or who would be wearing masks.
Okay. Scott, you want to say something? I hear you pulling the microphone over closer.
I'm just, I find a lot of holes in this plan. They were, much larger district, right next door to Lewiston, decided not to have masks, just haven't mandatory. They're a much higher population school. RSU 16 is similar, Poland, Kennesaw, Minut, same situation there. We're talking about the least vulnerable of our population. These kids recover so fast from this. My kids got COVID. They were sick. They got a fever. We gave them some ibuprofen, sent them to bed, next day, perfectly fine. I'm not aware of any deaths of any children from COVID in the state of Maine that attended school. I just, this is crazy. Designating kids that are different colors, maybe we should just pin stars on their chests. This is absolute insanity. I hope we can maybe come up with some changes to the plan per se. I mean, I'm not totally against it. If we see complete outbreak levels, maybe it's time to address it. But we're talking about some pretty small numbers. If I heard correctly, going into yellow was three students? Seems...
More than one, two to three.
Seems low to me. Just violating people's personal privacy about testing and just...
Well, that's with permission, test only with the parental permission.
I understand, but requiring tests to come back to school, this is just insanity.
Well, you don't have to have a test, but you can wait till 10 days?
I understand.
You have an option?
I heard the presentation.
Just want to make sure that people out there that are listening, understand that...
My stance on this is 100%. This should be optional.
All right, thank you.
And I think I'm on the other end of the spectrum, to be completely honest, particularly with pre-K to grade five. Knowing that they don't have a vaccination option at this moment, it just leads to confusion in terms of what's expected of them. When I think about pre-K kindergarten, I have a first grader. If they see their friends not wearing masks, I'm not sure what they'll do, you know what I mean? Even though the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics are all suggesting that if you're not vaccinated...
And I think that's my concern as well. It's like, can you imagine being a pre-K student on your first day of school, even a week into school, just coming into a sea full of masked people?
They did it last year, had no problem.
My grandson did it last year.
We don't know the long-term effects of how that's going to affect their mental growth.
All right, we don't want to get in an argument back and forth here. It shouldn't be...
I just want to point out, there's 24 people in this room. They're one person masked. I shook several hands on the way in. I'm more prone to having lasting effects from COVID than these children are.
And that's your decision, and you will live with the results if you should suffer from it. I mean, that's, you know, you know, so, but this is the plan.
I had it, and it got worse, so...
Okay, and that's fine.
I don't see you wearing a mask at any point.
I have it in my pocket. I was going to ring it in. I looked at the layout of the room. I am fully vaccinated. I don't believe that I'm carrying it. And I thought about it real well.
Any number of us could be carrying it tonight.
I know, and I have it right here, and I brought it along, and I wear it when I go into the grocery store, and...
But I could pick my kids up from school, and I can go to Walmart where there's dozens of unmasked people. How is that, they can't get it there, but they can get it at school?
We're not responsible for what happens in Walmart. We're responsible for what happens in our school system.
That's correct.
Okay, so to get back to discussion here is on the plan. Are there any other comments before I open it up to the community members who may want? Robbie?
I have a question about the individual level, Kathy, yellow. I think leaving that interpretation, everybody's going to interpret their kid being sick differently. I mean, we've all been in schools where kids come in sick, right, Mickey? And they should have never been there, and the parents, when you call them up, they say, well, they weren't sick when I let them go. You know, so I think that yellow designation is going to be a lot of, a lot of room for kids coming in sick.
Can we maybe get some sort of doctor's note ahead of time? My son has allergies. I mean, his nose is running four to five days. So based on the very first, second bullet point, congestion and nose running, he's going to get sent home potentially for, and have to go through a COVID test, I mean...
No, so they want to get sent home in the yellow designation. We're just asking that if you're exhibiting any type of symptom that's low-level, you'd be wearing a mask at that point to make sure that you're not spreading whether it's cold or it's allergies. We can't tell as educators. We're not...
So my point being is if somebody does have allergies,
They would still be wearing a mask.
They should be wearing a mask when they come to school.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I will open it up for comments from the floor on this. I ask that your comments be to the point and not long speeches by anybody from either side of the argument or any side. Or people who have questions, we certainly encourage the questions. We would like as much understanding... as much understanding of the plan by the community as possible. Uh, so that when school starts, um, there won't be so many questions left then. Uh, when the bus ride home at the end of the first day and everybody's got questions. So if you would raise your hand or send a message in the chat, we will call on you, uh, and, and entertain your comments.
So I have one person in the Zoom has their hand up. It's, uh, six, three. Somebody lived in six, three, five, five, four, seven.
So if you'd identify yourself, please.
Yes.
Which county you're a resident of.
Hi, this is Heidi Black. Apparently I'm assigned a number. I don't know how that happened.
Hold on a second. We gotta get our speaker system working here.
I've got it.
I don't know. Um, I just want to say I commend you all for all the hard work that you're doing.
Heidi, hold on just a sec. Our audio is not. There we go. Try it again.
Good. Okay. Um, Heidi Black, um, I'm an employee and a parent of two kids that went through the system. And I have to say that I commend you all for all the great hard work that you're doing. Um, it's definitely been a challenging year and a half or so. And I look forward to continuing working with you and your collaboration. I think you're doing, you, you all are doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're not seeing any coming into chat or raised hands. All right. Then we'll pull it back in here for any last minute questions about the plan before we vote to approve it because it is a change from what we had approved in the spring. Um, and the points that were changed have been highlighted. All right. So that we can get it out. Any other last comments?
Uh, I want to commend the CPT team for all the work that they put into this. I'm glad that parents are being given the option for their children to wear masks or not in the yellow category. And I completely agree with all of this. The green, sorry, the green. I completely agree, agree with all of this and how it's going to be run. And I think if you give your administrators the opportunity to do their job, you'll see that it will be run very, very smoothly. And I think we'll have a better year.
Probably go forward. Can I ask one question? Uh, do we have the ability to provide existing conditions so that we're not going to run into issues going forward before the school year? Meaning, am I able to provide a doctor's note saying that my child has, uh, allergies or IBS or some other, something that's going to show up as, as a symptom?
And, and I would say that's up to you guys. So this, this plan is recommended by the CPT. Um, you, you as a governing body of the organization have the opportunity to make changes to it throw it out and ask us to go back to the drawing board, um, or, or, or approve it as it is. So I think, I think that's a discussion if that's something
I, I guess I, I'm just curious if you're asking that question so the child doesn't have to stay home or the child doesn't have to wear a mask? Because if they're exhibiting symptoms on this plan, they'd be showing the mask, but they wouldn't have to stay home. So.
Wearing a mask. So yes, if my son pets a dog on the way into school, he's going to have a runny nose when he shows up. If the nurse has on file notes saying this child has allergies, he's not exhibiting any other symptoms, is it required for him to wear a mask?
So it would be up to the board to make that.
Right. I don't know if, if other board members want to speak to it, but I'd like to bring it up is, I understand the situation. But as educators, when they come in the classroom, we don't know if that runny nose is because of the allergy or the runny nose is from something else. In order to protect the staff and students that are in the close proximity of that student, to ask them to wear a mask while that symptom is presented, I don't think is a real burden. Uh, and I think it is a safety measure that while we didn't address that in the CPT specifically with allergies, the fact that, you know, we know kids are going to come in with colds.
Are COVID patients no longer, uh, possible asymptomatic?
Trying to address your concern about the allergy and exhibiting symptoms and where they have to wear masks. My position is, is that we take the plan as it's been presented, go forward. Every plan is a working document. Things have to change in it. It will be addressed. Recommendations we made back to the board. The board will discuss it as we did tonight and then make its decision on how we want to go forward. And, and what we want to implement. So my, my opinion, just one, I got one little vote. Uh, is that we don't make that modification because I'm not one to ask the building administrators or school nurses or teachers to go and make a determination, is that an allergy or is that COVID?
We would present that information to them ahead of time often.
Just because you have allergy doesn't mean that day it's an allergy. That's what I'm trying to get across. So.
So just for clarification purposes, typically exactly what Scott is saying, the school nurse will know because they have on file students who have various allergies and all other health concerns. To clarify the process, if a student comes in, they're coming off the bus, they have a mask, whether they patted a dog or not, if they're exhibiting symptoms, they're going to have a mask on their face. Is their first stop check-in of the day, if they're wearing a mask, are they going to be going to see the nurse?
No. No, I mean, a lot of times our parents will contact the nurse, just let them know. Um, or they email their teacher, just let you know that, you know, Johnny is not feeling good today. Um, and we'll continue to encourage the mask wearing and hand washing and things like that, regardless of what the symptom is or the why. Um, we did have students with allergies last year that were allergies. We did have some that were allergies and turning into COVID. Um, so we just are asking for mask wearing if you're exhibiting any symptom or the any why. Okay. And in this plan currently. Yep. Thank you.
Robbie?
No, I, I just, I agree with the plan and I was talking to Andy today and I mentioned the fact that if last year at this time, we had told the community, we're going to school five days a week and your kid has to wear a mask, but they can go five days a week. I don't believe there would have been hardly anybody that complained that they were in school five days a week wearing a mask. But because I think this plan is great, it's giving, and giving us an opportunity to bring kids in without a mask for as long as we can. And like I've said in the past, it's only as, it's only going to be as good as the community makes it. That's it. So we're going to try to keep, stay in school for as long as we can without a mask. But if we have to go do it, we're still going to be in school five days a week. Every student that we can keep in school, we're going to try and keep in school.
So if there's no other comments, then I would entertain a motion that we approve the fall opening plan as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Yeah, all votes are really supposed to be.
Yeah.
Weighted votes. Those opposed? The motion carries? Thank you. Item seven point three, discussion of federal ARP funding.
All right. Um, so moving on, as you all know, um, recently the American Rescue Plan, or you may not know. Awarded, um, the school district $3.592 million. Obviously that was processed. So, um, we, yeah.
Can you put a mic in front of?
Yeah.
Show some people up in here.
Yep. All right. So the American Rescue Plan, it's, it was, uh, the president's pitched to legislature. Obviously it went through a couple of different ideations. Um, but it came out, it's entitled the American Rescue Plan, but it's S R three. If you asked me what the S R acronym was, I'm, I couldn't tell you. Uh, but, uh, we were awarded $3.592 million to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. So there's just kind of the number and it's 3.592 and some change, but I ran into that. So they're pretty prescriptive in the way the funds can be used, sort of. Uh, and so basically there's, there's one, one big requirement and 20% of that amount of money has to be set aside to address the learning loss related to COVID-19. So when I think about learning loss, I think about curriculum assessment instruction. Um, and when we talk about that, I will pass that over to Kathy. But, um, number two was coordinated responses with other agencies. So just as a, as a, um, example, we in the past have done some work with the company N folks, uh, to increase attendance. It would pay for things like that. Um, educational technology. So that's programs and hardware, um, to increase our technology across the district. Um, and give students X, more access to technology for learning. Um, I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of that over the last probably year and a half, but obviously we can improve. This is things like you could provide, um, hotspots for students, uh, and pay for them with this money. Um, summer learning and after school programming, which fits into the 20%. Um, indoor air quality. So this would include, can include ventilation, um, LED lighting tied to ventilation, air conditioning, air purifiers, things like that. Um, health and safety mitigation strategies. So cleaning products, desks, uh, cleaning equipment, uh, things like that. And then any allowable uses under ESEA, IDA and all those other acts that we receive funds for. So special ed, um, family literacy, um, Title One and Carl Perkins Act is actually for, um, career technical centers. We don't have a career and technical center, so we can follow that. So as part of this, we needed to, um, we needed to kind of engage the community. So on July 30th, I sent out a survey uh, to our community for some, uh, input on how to use these funds. And so I, I received thirty responses, which I was, I was pretty impressed with. Typically when you send out something like this, you never know what you're going to get. Um, so just, I, I put some of the highlights here. Um, indoor air quality and ventilation, summer and after school programming, air conditioning, technology needs tutoring, before and after care that is free. And, and I'll caution all of you, some of these are just not, we're not able to do under this, under the rules, but I wanted to highlight them here. High school remodel, internet for families who do not have it. Uh, outside learning spaces, health and safety measures, meaning sanitizing equipment. Pan 95 masks, tax relief was one. Um, although a, as I said in my letter, you know, we couldn't use it directly for tax relief. That would be nice. We always liked that. Um, social emotional learning, uh, middle school expansion, testing equipment, uh, COVID, uh, education to dispel myths, uh, air conditioning on buses, uh, new lighting and fixing the parking lots. And, and, and I will say, I was really impressed with the thoughtfulness of the responses that I got. Uh, they were, they were pretty, if anybody actually wants to see them in total, I had them. Uh, they were, they were pretty good. So one of the things that we've done, um, you know, we've talked about in the past are some projects that actually would fit under this money that I think are really important. Uh, first off, there's an air handler unit here at Oak Hill High School. So a, as you all are aware, Oak Hill High School was built in 1976. Um, the air handler unit, specifically the one to the gym, is original to 1976. It meets the requirements. Um, but it is old, it is inefficient, um, and it needs to be replaced. That's a $600,000 price tag to do that. That's a big ask, um, of our taxpayers. This is an opportunity for us to use federal funds to pay for it. I have some money in S R two funds left over that I have earmarked for a project like this. Some of this money would be used to supplement that to get a project like that done. Um, an LED lighting project. So, uh, we've done two performance contracts in this district. The first performance contract addressed ballasts. It did nothing with LED lighting. The second one didn't either. So this project would be a Kerry Ricker, uh, middle school, you know, Oak Hill High School with the understanding that, you know, down the road, our plan is to close, would be towards, that's primary. We need to do this project regardless. Um, and I, and I'll tell you why. This represents a seventy, uh, immediate $70,000 a year savings in electricity, just in those three buildings. Now, if you have to put that into your budget, 70,000, it's about a 10-year payback. Um, this, this money would allow us to do that. The question is why lighting? Well, the lighting that we're looking at would be tied to the ventilation system. So when the light clicks on, um, it would, it would tell the ventilation system to start the air exchange of the water. It's a very new technology and I, it's impressive to see. So if somebody walks in the room, when it's occupied, fresh air is coming in automatically. Nobody needs to worry about setbacks or anything like that. It saves you money with the lighting, but it also saves you money with the air handler units not running when they don't need to run. Camera system upgrade at the high school. So with some of the other COVID funds, we did a camera assist, Kerry Ricker didn't have a camera system. Um, and so because of contact tracing, we needed a camera system there and long term. Um, we needed a camera system in that building. So we used some of the COVID relief funds early on to do that. The system here at Oak Hill High School is old. Um, it is inefficient. Marco can tell you, it's very difficult to use. Um, it's hard to remote in if we have an issue. Actually, I don't even think we can remote in anymore. Can we? Server is that old. Um, and so we could use this money to upgrade this camera system, which we need to do anyway. And instead of having the taxpayers have to pay for this through our budget, we can use federal money to do that. Um, and then learning loss. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Kathy to talk about, you know, process for that. So that's about 720,000.
Yeah. So we're definitely, um, excited about our success of our summer, comprehensive summer school program this last, um, summer. And we're looking forward to continuing that. Um, so using some of that money, um, as our community members have asked. Um, we are not necessarily in a rush, um, to spend this money. Uh, we have a little bit of time in 2024, I believe.
Has to be spent by September 30th, 24.
So we do want to take a pause and, um, I, I don't like the term learning loss. It's my own, my own thing. Um, I do feel like we need to find out where our kids are at. So we have students that were fully remote. We have some students that were homeschooling and coming back to us. And they are, um, our students are hybrid. We really need to know where they're at, um, and then work with our staff to figure out where our needs are. Um, and then figure out what our programming is. So we will have a process of finding, um, assessing our students, working with our staff of what skills do the staff need to teach, um, to kind of close the gaps and accelerate our students forward? What support do they need to do that? Um, and we'll have a process, uh, to kind of get information from our staff. Um, and that will go to the C P, or the CAI team, um, to kind of talk about what that learning loss money could go to.
I think it's important, you know, this, this application is due at the end of September. So we have some time. Kathy, it's nail in the head. I, I'm not in a rush to spend all of this. I, I think, you know, ultimately we've got three years, um, to expend this. There are going to be things that come up. It is a lot of money. Uh, it just is. And, and when you get money like this, everybody's eyes get real big. Who, what can we do? Uh, for me, it's really about what makes sense for today for our students, but also long term. Uh, how can we invest in our infrastructure here so that it doesn't, it doesn't impact us, you know, budget wise in 10 years? For instance, I think you all know, we got other COVID relief funds. I, I really impressed with the work that we did to spend that money to reduce impact on future budgets with things like buses, uh, with things like cleaning supplies and cleaning equipment and things that we now have in stockpile so that we could make adjustments to our budget for long term instead of having to ask the community for more and more money. I think that's, that's key. I, I say it all the time. You guys have heard me say it. Um, you know, we, we are a different RSU than those that neighbor us. You know, the majority of what we ask is on the backs of the property taxpayers. So anytime we can use federal funds to reduce that, I'm all for that. And that's important. So, you know, we bring this here. I didn't know if anybody else had some ideas if we wanted to. So, you know, we bring this here, I didn't know if anybody else had some ideas, if we wanted to talk about it some more, but I think it's important. Do need to get this application done. That doesn't mean it's set in stone, just like the other, our other grant funds that we get. We can adjust them along the way, we can ask for changes, things like that. But I do have to have something submitted by the end of September. Basically, what I, and the other piece that I'm looking into with this is potentially paying for the architect. I, I can't get a straight answer on whether or not, so I'm, I'm, I'm working on that. I don't know if that will be the case, I can't promise that. But if I can somehow work the architect into this package, I would like to do that, unlegited for money. And so, consequently, if we can get the federal government to pay for the architect, I'm all on board with that. So, if anybody has any ideas?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sure.
Ideas. I think one idea, when I was speaking with other parents that are in the district, when this survey came out, people don't know what options are. So, if there are really great options that other states have used or other districts have used, maybe giving people kind of a list, so it can generate more ideas. My second i- idea or thought goes around kind of professional development for our teachers. I know, in looking at previous budgets, there's not, there hasn't been much earmarked in terms of being able to encourage master's degrees and other post-secondary education. So, if there's ways to align teachers' PD with learning loss and new innovative ideas, I think that could be a really awesome opportunity.
It, it is, and that's something Kathy and I have talked about, you know, what kind of professional development can we offer? Can we, and again, it's all about, be candid, federal grant funds are somewhat of a game. Like, with these, you have to tie them to COVID-19, you have to find a way. You know, Scott and I and Kathy will sit around and talk about, okay, we need to do this, how do we tie it to this? How, you know, where's the connection here? It's, it's difficult at times, but I think that's a great idea.
Other comments?
So, there have been conversations in the past about potentially, we've done a lot to increase the bus fleet with this, but what about vans? Because I know that we had talked about that previously as well.
So, currently, we have a fleet, how many vans do we have now? Four, I think? Four vans currently. We have looked at purchasing more vans, you know, but they aren't, there aren't.
Well, yeah, I know.
That's part of the problem. And, and honestly, you know, I'll be candid, I like having vans. Part of, our problem is, you have to also have somebody to drive them.
Right.
But they've been very beneficial with things like golf, and wrestling, and field trips. Instead of running a great big bus and, and a bus driver, our staff can drive the van and can take students, the coach can drive the van and take students. So, that's, I mean, we use that, we use them, I, Scott, they're out all the time. Absolutely. I mean, they, I mean, not last year, last year's, they're different.
Yeah.
But in the past, they've been out all the time. We've had a lot of conversation about increasing that fleet. One of the things that's really hard about, every time you increase the fleet, you also increase your maintenance costs.
Yeah.
But, at the same token, if you're not paying for the vehicle, then there's a way around that. So, you're right, I mean, our bus, I will tell you, our bus fleet has never been.
Yeah.
We talk, have talked for years about the health of our bus fleet, and we kick it around every year, how many buses are we gonna buy this year? You know, we are at a place right now where we're beyond actually our replacement cycle. And so, how many new buses do we have coming next month, October, I guess?
Four.
Four new ones, that we didn't have to pay for. Better governments paying for. So, you know, those kind of things, and eventually, you know, we've talked in this district at times about moving to one bus run. Now, granted, you have to, you have to have people to drive the bus. That's a difficult thing right at the moment. But, you know, as our bus fleet expands, that could be a possibility. But until that point, my concern is putting safe, healthy buses on the roads for our students and for our drivers to drive. So, we've done a lot of that, but it's great, we, Scott and I talked about, I'm glad we've talked about this a lot, about getting more vans. We currently have, we have three 10-passengers and a mini van currently.
And just being able to rotate buses out?
Yeah.
And save mileage?
Huge.
Is a big, big plus.
Yeah, we went looking in May and June for vans.
Yeah.
I mean, all over, and it was either a premium price or.
Right.
Not at all.
It just provides a lot more opportunity for a small group learning to be able to go and do different things, regardless of what age. So, it would be nice if we could do some of that.
And it's hard to run a bus if you don't have someone to drive.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. You know, you know, consequently.
And with the shortage of drivers, every time we're taking a field trip, we're short a driver on the regular runs.
Right, yeah, right.
Or sports, or whatever.
Yep. So, I mean, we had a couple of situations this spring where baseball took two vans.
Yeah.
You know, because we didn't have a driver.
Sure.
And so, consequently, if we don't have a driver, but we need a bus, we end up contracting that out. Well, when you contract out the Northeast Charter, $800 to $1,500. This way, we were able to use the vans and not expend those funds. So, vans are a win-win all the way around. The other thing is, we do a significant amount of out-of-district transportation. We have a local transportation company that, that does that for us at a really nice price. However, it was a potential last year that they could have folded.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's always a potential in that industry, and so, having a fleet of vans to be able to take over, because we have to transport those students, we don't have a choice. So, that, we've been trying to build that fleet up as well.
Other comments, suggestions?
At our previous board meeting, we talked a little bit about ventilation, air conditioning, heat pumps.
Yeah. So, we did some exploring. I almost had a heart attack when we explored air conditioning. So, we called Siemens, we worked with the Siemens Corporation. So, I started with just central office, right? Just, just to see, it was $330,000 to put air conditioning at central office. We then talked about Kerry Ricker, Scott, 1.8 million.
1.8.
1.8 million to do air conditioning at Kerry Ricker.
Yeah.
The middle school was about 1.5. And they, Siemens wouldn't even quote this building. The engineer didn't quote the builder, because it wasn't built for. Yeah, I know, because that was where my brain went first, air conditioning. Now, I will say, the middle school is built for that. When we do the, when we do the addition, that will be the time to, to include that in that project. But, you know, we, we could look at air conditioning for Kerry Ricker, but it would eat up most of this.
But wouldn't it be a benefit for our summer program?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, that's when we started looking. Get it all there, and Kerry Ricker, you have one school, do your complete summer program?
When, when we built the middle school, I tried to get air conditioning, and it was an extra $250,000.
You couldn't even get a refrigerator.
I know. But, but, the system, that system is new enough, so you can add coils to the air handlers to make air conditioning with the system that you have in place.
So, think, think about that when inflation, so when the middle school was built, $250,000.
$250,000.
Now, it's talking a million and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And part of that is, and one of the things the engineer did say to us was, call us again in six months.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the cost of materials is so high right now.
Right.
You think about the cost, just the cost of lumber alone. It's the same conversation we had with the architect. The architect said, you know, we're gonna do this, but let's just, let's not get ahead of ourselves, because the cost of building and addition right now is far more than it may be in six or eight months when the supply chains get back.
It's hard to believe, but steel right now is cheaper than lumber.
Yeah.
Other comments? So, my thoughts are, I think, I believe that, I know you don't like the learning loss, but we know that over summers, students all suffer some learning loss. And because they were remote most of last year, at least half of the time, the loss was probably greater than it would be in a normal year, just because the learning probably wasn't as, it was as good as we can make it, but might not have been as good as it was two years ago, or a year ago, before we had the COVID. So, I think, and as my understanding, we have to explain our application, where we're gonna spend this money. So, the 1.9 that's left over from administration's plan, where that money would be spent, if we agreed with those four items up there, that that's where we want to go and stick the money. We're gonna find out where our students are and what support. I hope that we would stay open to using support mechanisms to help the students go and learn. You know, I'm a big proponent of, of offering classes online, having done that in college. You know, it was kind of nice, either I had to go in a classroom and just ITV it there, or I could do it at home. Even took some on VHS tape when I was in Scotland, because no way, no place around. So, I think that students that are motivated can look at certain subjects and would be able to find a profit, for-profit organization out there that for years have been developing curriculum and online presentations to allow them to get it. It's also a good avenue for those who, maybe I'll just take algebra, took Algebra I, looked past them, but they don't feel that they're that strong, and they need some support to be able to go and take kind of like a refresher or an algebra course online. There's no risk to them, because they don't really have to get a passing grade, it is to bring them up to speed. And I think that that is a lot of what this money is to try and do, is to get the students, get them back up to where they should be and solid in their different subject matters, so that they can continue to be successful as they go on. The last thing that ever works is to take a student that's unprepared for the next grade and put them there, because they're never gonna be prepared for that grade or the grades after. And, so, we need to really use some of this money to provide those types of support. Go out, get it from people already have it developed and are doing this, and have done it for years, instead of trying to build it all in-house, because that takes a lot more time from the staff to go and have to do that, plus their normal duties. And that's not what they trained for, and it's probably not what they wanted to do, was to go and build online curriculum, you know? So, I would like to see some effort put into that, and to use the funds. That's why they have 20% that needs to go into those type of areas, so. I think your items up here, that air handler is only for the gym?
That's, that's, so $600,000 just for the gym.
Yeah.
And it, it does other things, its main purpose.
Well, that's $235,000.
Right.
Well, that's from the S R two.
I have other funds, S R two.
So, that $235,000 only goes towards the gym?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we don't need air handlers in the classrooms?
Well, we have, we replace the human events, we've done a lot of that work already. So, to do all three air handler units in this building, it was almost $2 million. It was unbelievable. So, what Siemens said to us was, the first priority has to be the one in the gym, it's the most inefficient, and it doesn't just feed the gym, it feeds other parts of the building as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's main purpose is the gym, but it was, it was.
It was administrative offices and that whole.
The cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Kitchen, where else, I can't remember, Scott. It was, the air handler unit for the gym is like four different places. Gym, administrative offices, nurse's office, this whole lower, the whole back side.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a lot of money just for the gym.
Well, it's a, it's a significant amount.
Yeah.
All, whole project was unreal.
What about air, air pumps? I mean, they, they produce cool air as well.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's rebates available for.
Yeah, there are.
There are.
I know there are, you know, residential based, but.
There are. We have talked about heat pumps, we talked, like, for instance, at central office, we talked about heat pumps. And, and Siemens is looking at that to try to put heat pumps into these buildings. We actually have some.
Yeah.
Like, the, the main office here.
And the computer room.
The computer room.
Server room.
The library, we all, all have heat pump technology. Most of our buildings have some, other than the BTOG, so that's primary, have some heat pump technology.
And that probably offset the heating costs as well.
It does to some degree.
It does to some degree.
It does.
Yep.
Yes, so the cost of putting heat pumps in shared classrooms or something, I don't know. That would take, you know, instead of getting central air, I think the heat pumps is a good idea to look into what the cost would be.
Especially if we can get some rebates.
Yeah. I don't know what rebates are available for businesses.
I don't, I'm not sure. I know housing, it's like $1,400 for a unit, but one unit can do three heat pumps, depending on the size of the, the unit, so.
Something similar.
If you're talking classrooms, they would handle a classroom.
They have pretty small space.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking.
Another idea.
Another idea.
Yeah, this is what happens. What if you use funding for mini grants for high school students to create after-school programs for our younger students? Specifically, like, focused on content area. That way, what I, in my profession, working with older kiddos, it gives them a chance to kind of explore that mastery, so not only are the little kids learning, and kind of seeing them, or the bigger kids, the little kids get to learn some new skills too. And that could be a cool way to get students involved, yes.
All right, so there are some ideas, we have some up here. I think I would like to kind of keep that open until, I mean, you can start working on it and working on the shell of the.
Well, and what I typically do with things like this, so I would take the projects that we currently have, I would put all the money into them, and then, when we have new things that come up, I can then redo the application. I can have the application reopen, we can make changes. So, it doesn't, it doesn't get earmarked. It has to be earmarked somewhere, but it does, we would spend the.
Okay, and you stuck up the slide before this, where you got the community input?
Yep.
And just briefly, which ones on, on there could not?
Right.
Yeah, so.
Are, are eligible.
So, high school remodel. I don't know about COVID education. Middle school expansion, maybe, it's gonna be tough. Tax relief, definitely not. Parking lots, we cannot, there's no way, I don't know any way I could try to find to do parking lot. I mean, the parking lot here at high school needs to be done, it, it just does, but to tie that to COVID-19, I'm not sure how I would do that. Might be difficult. The rest of them are, are potentially doable, so.
Yep.
All right, so keep thinking about it, if you have more ideas, shoot them in. You know, do the survey online, we probably all got the email. If we didn't get the letter from the school, we've probably got it from the town.
Yeah.
Okay?
I said, I did, I did send it to all three towns. I sent it to. To be put out through the, which feels bad, so that's.
Whale sent theirs out, because I got mine.
I got mine.
I'll check into that.
Okay.
Because I suggested that, because I wanted to get as much input as possible from the community.
Right.
You know, and so, don't just restrict it to those who have students, all right? Get it out to the other people in the community that can have some great ideas. So, all right, so that's kind of the discussion on that. We don't have any committee reports tonight. This is an opportunity, if any board members want to make comments, this would be an opportunity, we'd open up for frequent comments.
I'm just glad we're here together again. You know, I think we're generating so much more being here than in, in the Zoom. So, we just hope this continues. Right. And to welcome to our new board members.
Yes. Christine Scott, welcome. All right, any other comments? All right, at this time, we're gonna move into executive session. So, there is no business planned after this, other than the vote to adjourn, or actually, I just kind of move us out unless there's an objection. So, if you want to stick around and watch us adjourn, hang out someplace. But if you've got something better to do, like, you know, a life. We appreciate your coming tonight, and hope to see you again. But this time, anytime I entertain a motion to enter into executive session, person to one, MRS A4056D, with the business manager and the director of C A I, regional schools unit, for education association, I A, N E A, educational support professional association. If I could have a motion.
Go.
Second. Moved in second.
Can I just mention, I'm thinking, if I don't say it, I'm gonna forget it. Could you send that slide show to?
All in favor?
Yes. Yes, that would be helpful.
Yes.
All in favor of going to executive session?
Oh, yeah.
Unanimous. Okay.
The air moving, that's a great idea.